Next, we have-
If I can just ask you to hold on? Okay, go ahead. We are ready.
Next, we have a Glendale City Council joint meeting with the Glendale Redevelopment Agency for November 30th, 2010. May we have roll call for the council, please?
Council members, Draymond-
Here.
Friedman-
Here.
Quintero-
Here.
Weaver-
Here.
Mayor Najarian-
Here.
And we need a roll call for the agency?
Oh, yes. Can we have a roll call for the agency, please?
Agency members, Draymond-
Here.
Najarian-
Here.
Quintero-
Here.
Weaver-
Here.
Chair Friedman-
Here.
I may have your report, please.
Agenda for the November 30th, 2010 joint public meeting of the City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was postponed Wednesday, November 24th, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall before both bodies today is the Director of Community Planning and Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding development impact fees ordinance for libraries and parks. One A is a council resolution delaying the scheduled increase of the development impact fee.
Thank you. We're going to Mr. Lansaffin.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Ms. Chair, members of the Redevelopment Agency. In late 2007, the City Council adopted a library and parks fee ordinance which set a schedule. The fees were to be paid with development and then used for park and library development. The schedule for implementing those fees was over a period of time with a three-phase, multi-year structure. The second phase is set to commence tomorrow, December 1st, 2010. Initially, projects were either given pipeline status, that is, projects that were already in the queue at the time of the ordinance, or they just fell under the normal project. As a result of the economic downturn that we've experienced, the City Council has taken two actions to extend project implementation approvals and codes. Those two-year extensions, the second one was a two-year extension, will expire on December 31st, 2011. This fee was not included in that. We have had very little development activity in the last few years, and so that the issue really wasn't raised. However, we do have one developer, American Builders, I'm sorry, American Multifamily, who is proposing a project at Broadway and Maryland that has asked the question, would the City Council entertain delaying this, the implementation of this next fee increase so that their project can remain economically viable? It is a request that was generated from that developer. However, we do see it, that it is a, something that the City Council could do and be consistent with that extension of project approvals that you have done in the past. However, there is, it goes from three, the fee goes from $3,000 to $7,000, I'm sorry, $3,500 to $7,000. So, it's double. This project, this specific one, may not be viable with that increased fee. So, the request, again, was made of the City Council to consider delaying that fee. There is a resolution before you that would allow you to extend that, and it would become effective immediately. So, this project would be able to take advantage. Staff is here from planning, building, I'm sorry, planning, redevelopment, and legal. If you have any questions, that concludes our-
Mr. Weaver?
Yeah. They have any idea when they would begin pulling building permits, or the layoffs?
I believe they would start pulling some demolition and grading permits very quickly. Building permits may not come till mid-next year.
So, they're, they're-
To your-
They're that close to proceeding? Like it's years out? Year out or something? It's close?
Probably mid-2011.
Options be, keep it viable to do, to do the extension. If not, they may go away, period.
That's a question you could ask the developer.
Any other comments?
Are we going, are we going, do you have any cards?
I have no cards. There's no card submitted on. Mr. Starry?
Just a, a question for clarification. Would the council have the option of, we've recommended to December 2011, should they set a shorter date? Okay. So, if you want to say to provide some incentive on the current projects that may be impacted by this to move it along, you could set a shorter date. Still have the option to extend it at that time if you, if you had a desire, but you could set a shorter date.
Ms. Friedman?
I'm supportive of this extension. In ordinary times, I probably wouldn't be, but these are not ordinary times, these are extraordinary times. And the developers proposing using a building that's, that is blighted, that's an eyesore, that's becoming graffitied, and doing something with the building that's exciting and would be, I believe, a real benefit to the entire area. So, I think that the project is something that we, that we need, something that would be good for Glendale, and I'm willing to give them the extension, and I believe that they're pretty close to, you know, to moving forward, and I'm looking forward to seeing this project get built, and people moving in and activating that area. Thank you.
Just to finish, I did make the comment closing, but I think I was on the losing end of a four-to-one vote. Circuit City was brought in. Didn't like the design that it closed off the corner, many pedestrians, you had to go down the street, used all the windows, they blocked them up with, using it for storage capacity within the building. Just was a bad design. What they tried to put in there was too small. Yeah, I'd like to see what's there demoed, something came in, something else come in there. I know there's changes that have been made to the project, and I believe, I'm answered greatly. Yes, when it comes public, what's happening, residents of this committee will really appreciate certain components that have built into it.
Any other comments? Mr. Draymond?
I agree with what's been said. This is, it's not only unusual times, it's an unusual project, and it's one that I think is, is, will be beneficial to the downtown. I think it will benefit not only the area that we were just discussing in the previous item, but it'll benefit our-
Entertainment.
Arts and entertainment district. But more than that, I think what it'll bring is a, a, quite a few downtown stakeholders who are in a demographic both age-wise and economically that are really currently only a part of our downtown population, or a part of our city's population from nine to five. And I would like to see more of those folks here 24/7, spending their money here in our city, in our existing stores, restaurants, recreational facilities and so on, rather than just nine to five, and then going elsewhere. So, I think this will also, this project will work hand-in-hand with, with the ongoing development expansion that the city is undertaking with Disney, because I think that a number of the residents there will be employees at the Disney campus. In any case, so I'm inclined to support it. It's something that I probably would not support, as Ms. Friedman stated, I probably would not support in other economic circumstances. But weighing the, the ups and the downs of this, I think that the, the majority of the, majority of the, of the positive items are on the, on the side of the extension. So, I will, I will support a one-year extension.
I had just one thing to think about what was said. If the, if the apartments in the Americana are already 98% leased, would imagine that these units will fill up fairly rapidly, kind of at a reduced price, and bring another element downtown, so it'll work.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I could have added one thing.
I'd like to-
That is, I'm prepared to support it, and that is pending your comments and Mr. Quintero's comments, if he has any. I want to take those into account as well. Since there are no speaker cards, I can't, can't take public comment in-
I'm gonna support the staff report.
I have a few comments. This project really bothers me, and the way we discuss this project as being just a hair's breadth away from groundbreaking, I think, causes me some problems, because next week, if you've seen the agenda, there's a laundry list of items that we need to do in terms of giving them variances, exemptions. And let me just give a little bit of history. We sent our planning staff four years ago to do a comprehensive study of the downtown area and to come up with a plan, a downtown strategic plan, specific plan, to set forth development standards. And the reason we did that is because, in the past, developers would come in and they, they knew how to play the game. They'd play their cards and play their songs to the council individually, one, two at a time, sometimes in the council chambers, sometimes in their offices, sometimes meetings late at night, and they'd say why they really needed an exemption from the zoning for their project, because unless I had the exemption, I can't make my project go forward. And too often, council agreed to that, for all the wrong reasons. And it's for those reasons that we sent Mr. Hagani back with his staff and with the best consultants and experts that money could buy to develop a comprehensive plan for downtown, one we could live with, one we could place down on the table, to all the other developers and say, these are our plans. This is what we expect in Glendale, and if you want to build in Glendale, this is what you need to do. And we discussed it, and we brought in all the stakeholders, we brought in the developers, we brought in the residents, the apartment owners, the, the business owners, and it was a community effort, and it was a difficult community effort that took more than a year, years. And when it was done, we held it up high, and we said, we're proud of this effort. This is our plan for downtown development. No more special deals, no more one-ups, no more variances and exemptions and twiddle this and twiddle that, because if you want to build in downtown, our planning experts and our visionaries have reached out and brought us this document. And we held it up high, and we were proud of it. And we got awards. We got awards from SCAG, that big compass thing you got, Mr. Hagani, right? What was that award for? That was for developing the foresight and the vision for downtown planning. And everywhere I would go, they'd mention, oh, Glendale got the, the Compass Award. And we'd even bring it with us, we'd haul it around in the trailer and bring it to the, to the seminars and the conventions, and there's our, there's our award, because we care about planning. We don't do things willy-nilly. And now this developer comes through who wants exemptions on height, he wants exemptions on density, he wants exemptions on parking. Last I heard now, he even wants exemptions on the plumbing. He doesn't want to do the plumbing the way our, our codes are requiring it to be done. I take deep issue with that. And then, oh, one more thing. Oh, I don't want to pay these fees, these darn fees, these darn fees. We spent a lot of time talking about these darn fees. And everyone on this council knows or should know that we have a shortage of parks in Glendale, a shortage of libraries in Glendale, and it's the one scar on our otherwise wonderful municipal image. We can't ignore it. And I spoke to my colleagues before about some of the difficulties that our children face, when they're up at the sports center or at Shoal Canyon at 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, trying to kick a soccer ball in the shadows on what used to be grass, what used to be grass four months ago at the beginning of the season, but it's now nothing more than a little dust bowl with brick dust getting in their faces and in their lungs, because there's no other place to play. There's no other place to play. And God forbid, the maintenance crew tries to water that grass, because it's not grass, it's just vestiges of roots trying to cling to that earth, because in one minute, the next team gets on there, and Johnny, don't kick the ball too far over there, because you're gonna run into Suzie's team. I don't know if my colleagues have seen that, but I've seen that. We tried to build a swimming pool, tried to build a decent swimming pool, and we cobbled together sources of funding that even made our Parks and Recreation staff raise their eyebrows and say, wait a minute, you know, CDBG money for four years in a row? So, what was supposed to be a decent swimming pool is now a, a, nothing more than an oversized wading pool. And that's what we call our municipal pool, and I'm ashamed of that pool at this point, to be quite honest. And I'm ashamed, because we don't have the funds to give proper improvements and proper capital dollars to our children. Tennis courts, basketball courts, we don't have those. Picnic areas, scarce. Libraries, libraries. Oh, everyone here loves libraries. Who doesn't love libraries? No, no, no. Everyone loves libraries. But when it comes down to funding libraries, where is everyone? We're giving this developer and other developers behind them, and I don't know if there are any other developers behind, and this looks like it's a one-shot deal that we're trying to make it appear it's for the benefit of the development community. Libraries are the one place that our children of South Glendale can go and get a quiet place to sit and study and try and do their homework. I can tell my kids, go do your homework in the den, on the dining room table, in the study, go to your own room. But the kids in South Glendale can't do that. First of all, they don't have a dining room. Second of all, their bedroom is being shared with one or two other siblings. Our libraries are the only places we can give them the quiet peace that they need to study, to give them a bright future. And we talked about all this, and we looked at other cities like Santa Clarita and said, wow, what a great city that is. Look at those great parks, look at those great libraries. And the reason they have great parks and world-class libraries is because they have a development fee that they implemented, and they stuck to. They didn't bring it down or bring, it's good times, let's see, is it good times or bad times? Which way is it blowing? They stuck to it. And they are now the envy of all other cities. And they've got great parks, if you're a bike rider, they've got great passos and great bike lanes, and great places to avoid the traffic and vehicle interface that we don't have in Glendale, because we don't have the money to do that. The last City Council understood this. We sat down, talked about this, we fought about this, but in the end, we all agreed. All except for one, Bob Eusefian didn't want to implement these fees. And we fought with Bob Eusefian. He was on the developer's side, he wasn't on the kid's side. He wanted to give the developers every break possible so they could build as much as they could in the city. There was only Bob Eusefian a few years ago. I don't know what's happening today. I don't know where our concern is for our children. And to say, this is better than nothing, well, that's not true, because these developments, and especially this development, is gonna bring dense development into the downtown area. They're gonna be using libraries, they're gonna be using parks, they're gonna be putting us in a worse-off situation than if that development didn't occur. Those libraries are gonna be more crowded. Well, it's half a loaf is better than no loaf. Well, I'm not sure, because there's gonna be additional people in the city using the libraries, using the parks. Now, we made a decision to go for this. I don't know why we're going back on this. I don't know why we're giving in. It's not fair. It's not fair to our children. We said, let's give the developers a chance. They're in the pipeline. We can't impose this pipeline, this money, fees on pipeline projects. So, we gave them this big, great, big, drawn-out pipeline. We said, after that, though, if they haven't bought their land, they can incorporate the additional expenses that these fees are gonna impose on them in the negotiation of the land. In this particular project, they have not purchased the land. Why aren't we telling this developer to go back and renegotiate his land price? Have any one of us told him that? No. We're ready to fold. We're ready to say, oh, you might go somewhere else. Well, this is what we're doing, and it's not fair to our city. It's just not fair. Why don't we give them a break on their art fees? How about that? Let's give them a break on their art fees, their 1%, their 2%. Is anyone willing to do that? Are the arts more important than our children's health and their welfare? I don't think so. So, I'm very disappointed, I'm very disturbed that this is what we're doing. We're giving this developer a free ride, he hasn't signed the purchase price on his land, and we're folding, and our children are paying the price. How about the art fees? Let's give him back his art fees. Oh, no, we gotta have the arts, we gotta have the arts. I'll make a motion right now that we rebate this, this developer's art fees in lieu of reducing the parks and library impact fees. Anyone gonna second that?
Join you in that?
I will, too.
Great. In lieu of reducing the park fees, that we rebate and we waive the arts fees. There's a motion, and there's a second. So, we've got competing motions on the table.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there, isn't there another possibility, too, that the Redevelopment Agency covers those fees instead, so that the fees are still paid, so that the Redevelopment Agency would pay the park fee?
Well, here's the problem. This isn't a redevelopment project in the sense of being assisted by it. And if it is, they probably end up, if they have assistance, they'll fall into a prevailing wage problem, which will probably far exceed, the impact on them will probably far exceed the savings they might accomplish. Now, you have other means by which you could possibly tap your tax increment to benefit parks, but it's unlikely that that'd be a mechanism that the developer would want. Bill, your opinion on the impact of prevailing wage, or Jillian?
In fact, I just asked Mr. Garcia the same thing, and there may be some fees that could be paid by the Housing Authority for those units that are reserved for affordable, but probably would kick in prevailing wage.
Yeah.
And I don't know what elements of the project are already being done.
So, my other question is, are we talking about reinstating the, the full parks fee, but waiving the arts fee for every project, or just for this one?
If I may, before we really get into that discussion about the arts fee, it's not on the agenda where-
Yeah, that's-
.....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
plan to develop, and how long that will take. And even though Mr. Najarian kind of dismissed the argument that half a fee or less of a fee is better, you know, is better than no fee maybe isn't a good argument, I'm not sure why it's not. Why, for the sake of the Parks Fund, for the sake of the children, we wouldn't want whatever fees we could get, the tax increment that would be generated by this project, which would also go into parks in that area, that's also a benefit. So, I understand the desire to kind of hold strong, get the fees that we want to get, but I'm also trying to balance that against the possibility that that Circuit City building will sit there with broken windows and, you know, who knows what crawling inside there for the next year or two, while we wait around for this economy to recover or wait around for another developer with means to come forward. And to me, you know, what's more of the benefit? To, you know, hold strong and stick to our guns and our morals and get no fee and have no money going into the Parks Fund from this project, and have a blighted situation that continues to affect all of the businesses around it, or to at least get what we can right now in this terrible economy that's the worst that I remember and probably a lot of people remember, and to try to revitalize this area? So I think it's not that easy of a decision, and I think that there are good arguments to be made on both sides, and I don't think that people who, that those of us who support postponing this fee, and by the way, it's not waiving the fee, it's just to continue the fee as it stands at this very moment. I don't think that it means that we're overly pro-development or that we've sold out to the developers. I don't think any developer in this town thinks for an instant that I'm, that I've sold out to developers. But as redevelopment chair, I also have to think about a downtown that has a major vacancy and a major blighted property, and how we deal with that. So, those are my comments.
Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, I'm for holding off till next week and then working out a way to substitute the art fee.
And may I just say that I'm open to that suggestion as well? That's fine with me.
Sir Drayman?
Well, I will not support that notion. I will support the notion of consideration of that, but I'm not interested in supporting, delaying this. There were a whole lot of, you were on a roll, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure, Chair Friedman, though, this is anything about morals. And maybe that comment that you made was simply, you didn't mean it quite that way. This isn't about morals. This is about a view of our downtown, and boy, oh, boy, if I've ever heard, you know, reengineering in an argument, to sue a vote one day and then not sue a vote the other day, boy, did I just hear it. To define this as an issue, and I don't know whether the rest of the people, the rest of the denizens of the dais, as we're sometimes called, are, "I've been asleep for the past five, 10 minutes." But to be told that I am either, I have two choices, ladies and gentlemen, apparently. I am either on the side of kids, or I'm either, or I'm on the side of developers. Wow. Wow. I'm sorry if I grab that shovel and take it out of your hand, Mr. Najarian, but you're not gonna dump that load of swill and cram it down my throat. Why not add puppies? I want to know why we're not talking about puppies with big sad eyes, too, on this. You know, there's a reason we're talking about kids and parks, when it has very little to do with this discussion. We're talking about kids and parks, let's add puppies. Kids, parks, puppies, apple pie and mom. Why? Because it's a zinger, it's a zinger argument. It's for the kids. Had nothing to do with the kids when we voted for extensions several times last year, last term. Suddenly, it's all about the kids.
I voted against those, too, Mr. Drayman.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter. At that time, you didn't add the other elements of the pool that, I wish you had asked me or informed me, Mr. Najarian, when I was voting to support you on your pool project, had advised me to vote against it, because it was such a bad project and because you were so disappointed in it. I feel bad, because I thought I was supporting something that was of benefit to this city, something that you had been working on for a long time. Now to find out, it's just an utter disappointment, and somehow or other, I got swept along with it. Not fair, I heard the term "not fair" several times in that argument. I think those arguments are not fair. I think it is fair to say that there are reasons to support this and reasons not to support it. And I think that there are arguments that can be made on both sides, reasonable ones. But this idea that this is about kids' side or developers' side, I don't buy that, I won't buy that. And quite frankly, Mr. Mayor, you do not have the background, authority, or at all, to speak for me in that regard. So, I am, I've told you once before on the dais, I will never sit here and allow one of my colleagues to cram that kind of garbage down my throat. I support kids, my entire background has been about supporting children, and I will certainly not allow you, just as you tried to jam down my throat once before about morals, you're not gonna jam this swill down my throat either. I'm neither on the side of developers in this city either, so, sorry.
Can I move 1A?
Well, no, it does not swill, and the facts are that our own city reports showed us that for every new resident that comes into Glendale, every new unit, the cost to the city is not the $7,500 fee that we're aiming to collect. No, the $7,000 fee, but well multiples of that into the $14,000, $15,000 range, and that means that the city is subsidizing each and every unit that comes in that doesn't pay a fee of $14,000 or $15,000. And those fees are specifically targeted for libraries and parks, and to the extent that puppies go to parks, well, I guess puppies are in it, too. To the extent that children and even seniors go to libraries, yes, those funds go towards libraries, they go towards operating hours, they go towards staff, they go towards programs. And what we're doing now is, we're sliding back off of our commitment, the bold commitment that we made as a council, towards funding those types of programs, parks and libraries. That's all it is. This developer deserves no break. This developer hasn't expressed his efforts to us, that he's gone back and negotiated with that landowner a discount, because look what the city's doing. Their fees are going from $3,500 to $7,000. I haven't heard that, I haven't seen that in a staff report, I haven't heard that from the developer, I haven't heard that from anyone. And the whole point in escalating these fees, what they would, is that they would have a chance to go and negotiate that full well, knowing full well what our fees are gonna be in advance. Mr. Quintero.
I have some questions. How much will the art fees be for this project? Do you have a ballpark figure?
1%, 2%, something like that.
Members of the council, that fee is about $281,000 for the project.
And how much will the, if this is rolled back, how much, I'm sorry, if this isn't rolled back, how much will the parks and library fee be?
$750,000 or something like that.
Based on the current, I'm sorry?
Million five.
As of tomorrow. If the new fee structure kicks in, it would be approximately a million five.
Did you say 200 and something like that?
$281,000 is the art fee.
The current fee is?
Art fee.
No, $281 is the art fee.
Yes.
Okay, I'm part.
And if it's not rolled back, it would be 1.5 million in parks fees?
Yes. And currently, it's at 762.
Okay, and currently, it's at 762. Okay, and then how about, in terms of the overall development, how much would be paid every year for park fees, et cetera? By that, I mean, you know, the tax increment and all the rest of it.
You know, Mr. Quintero, guessing?
Yeah.
Can help me with it. It's about $280,000 of tax increment that's spun off of this. If you assume that 75% is the housing and 25% is the commercial, I think if my numbers are right, it's about $100,000 total per year that would go to, $100,000 that's available for general redevelopment use. The balance, $180,000 would go to the park and library development, capital development.
Per year?
Per year.
How much again? Say it again? Hundred?
About $180,000, under the policy that the agency adopted of 75% of housing and 25% of commercial, would go to parks and libraries for capital improvements. There's about $100,000 left over for general redevelopment use that you could commit to any redevelopment purpose.
So even if it is rolled back, we'll still continue to get the 180K per year?
Per year policy, yes. But again, just to make sure you're aware, that's for capital development of parks and libraries.
That $180,000 is specifically for parks and libraries?
That is correct.
So in other words, if this project goes away, the parks and libraries lose immediately $762,000 that they would have gotten from fees, under, if we continue with the current fee structure, not raising it, plus, the parks and libraries would lose $180,000 per year?
Yeah, and that increment would not be generated.
Assuming there's no project behind this to take its place, which right now, there isn't.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, you could describe it that way, but the problem is that there's people, there's more people using those parks. We're not dealing with the same number of people using the parks, we're dealing with all those people that they're bringing in, using the parks, and we're in a deficit estimated at $15,000 per unit that it loads and burdens the city's general fund. Sir Drayman?
Well, that's the second time that that notion's been trotted out, and of course, it really doesn't fit. It would be if this were normal, run-of-the-mill kind of housing. That's heat that's on, by the way. Just pardon me.
Not here, it's not.
Why is it so loud?
I don't know, it's been loud.
Bold air over here.
Yeah, it's coming right down on me.
This is targeted housing. It's a targeted type of square footage for a specific use, and my colleague knows, because the LA Times wrote about it extensively, as it's been, this concept has been developed in other cities such as Santa Monica, that these are targeted for a particular age demographic, income demographic. These are not mom and dad and a couple of kids, that was really weird sounding, by the way. Mom and dad and, you know, two and three kids. These are generally young, urban professionals, these are single professionals and so on. The vast majority of these people are not going to be flooding our libraries, our elementary schools, or our soccer fields, I have you know, so.
We can take away their library cards and their park passes?
I think you're on the losing end of an argument, Mr. Najarian, is what I think.
It is a losing end, in terms of votes, but not in terms of what's right for this city.
I think in terms of concept, what I think.
Make a motion yet? I'll move 1A.
I'll second it.
There was a motion.
There was not, there was a, the competing motion was deemed out of order, I guess.
At this time. If there's no other comments, I'll call.
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Aaron Najarian?
No.
Will we adjourn for the city council?
We don't need a separate, we don't need a separate vote for the agency, do we?
Second. Council's adjourned.
Move to adjourn for the redevelopment agency.
You have a second? You're adjourned for the redevelopment agency. Thank you all.